Good afternoon. And welcome to the regular meeting of the city council, including the Library and Observatory Board, the Housing Authority Board, and the city council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. Meeting is scheduled for approximately 1:00 p.m. on January 18th, 2024. Please stand for the flag salute led by council member Mag Marker.
Place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undervalued, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Councilmember Malato?
Present.
Councilmember Marker?
Here.
Councilmember O'Keefe?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Here.
Mayor Downs.
May I have a motion to excuse Mayor Downs?
I'll make a motion to excuse Mayor Downs.
Second that.
There's a motion and second, please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. We will now ask for non-agenda public comments, and if you will, please advise us of any requests.
Certainly. So now is the time for anyone who would like to speak on items that are not on today's agenda. The first speaker is Brad Anderson.
Good morning, Brad Anderson, City Ranch Mirage. I just want to ask a question. I know you can't answer it, but I noticed you excused a mayor for this meeting. I've seen that happen before, not just with a lot of various organizations, government organizations throughout the valley. But again, there's no transparency. I mean, you're excusing him, but we don't know the reason why as a public. But anyway, I want to just go on with the election. I mean, the appointment of the city council member. I was just, I guess I'm still amazed that you would do that over a special election so the people of the city can choose the next council member. But it is done, and we will move on from that. But anyway, I just want to let everybody know there was a COVID Communities Commission meeting yesterday. That is an organization or a meeting, or I guess it's a meeting between, well, it's a commission from Indian Wells, Palm Desert, and Ranch Mirage. And this is the first time in over three years that I ever attended because I've never been able to sit around that location where you were meeting and because of COVID too. But so it was interesting. I was, my research has led me to that commission that impacted us or the residents of the city of Ranch Mirage with these license plate readers. Apparently, this is the commission that approved most of that without, well, really, I think, I don't know how many people from the public go to that, probably none. But anyway, I was alarmed by Mayor Protem there, comments, not alarmed, but concerned because he's 100% backing this surveillance too, which is okay. It has its purpose, I understand, but there has to be more transparency to the citizens that encounter those every day. They're scattered throughout the city. I think they're blithe. I think they're ugly to look at. And again, there was a sign commission that never went to that, that it should have because one day they were there, you know? So I think the public needs more transparency on that type of surveillance because it, even the last contracts, I mean, I'm skipping around, but in the demands, I guess, the city spent another $30-plus thousand on these. I mean, where's the transparency? What are you adding more? Are you, I know there was one repair, but still, I think we need to know. I mean, because apparently there was a car located in some crime, but it was done just off the color. So that tells me it takes photographs of everybody and anything that passes in front of it. So that's a concern, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next speaker is Melissa Ritchie.
Good afternoon, council members and city manager. My name is Melissa Ritchie. I'm the founder of Preservation Mirage, and I just wanted to mention that coming up in just four weeks' time is Modernism Week. Modernism Week takes place in the valley here every year from February 16th to 25th, and Ranch Mirage always participates in Modernism Week. We thank the city for also sponsoring this event every year. Just to invite all the council members to some of the neighborhood tours that are happening, I've sent an email to Gabe Codding, and he'll be making sure that city staff and council members are sent details of the events that are taking place this year. Besides the ever-popular Sunnylands, we have several neighborhood tours. Our own community where I live is Tamres Ranchos. It's sold out. That takes place on Sunday, the 18th, but please do come along as our guests, and we'll have seven of our historic homes in our historically designated community open for you to view. Cody Court, which was designed by William F. Cody, is the second community that's on tour. That was designed in 1970. Seven of its eight homes are open. Tickets for that tour are still for sale, so I do encourage members of the community to support this event as well. Tamres West is also on the tour. That has another seven homes, designed in the late '60s. That community features a very historic untouched condominium that was designed by the famous designer Arthur Elrod, and everything in there is original, from the foil wallpaper on the ceilings of the bathrooms to the lighting, to the furniture, to the record player, everything in there is original. So I really recommend you go along to that. And then, last but not least, Preservation Mirage is doing a tour of four very special significant homes at Tamres Country Club, and that tour takes place on Friday, the 16th. As I say, Gabe Codding will be sending an invite to all of you, and I very much appreciate your support during Modernism Week. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Michael Pierce?
Thank you for allowing me to come before you. I am a 30-year resident of Ranch Mirage, including homeowner and a member of the Ranch Las Palmas Country Club. I'm about as proud of Ranch Mirage as possible. We love it here, but I would also like to compliment you on the things we're having at the library. We went last night, we went to Peter Sprague, and we're going to the amphitheater on Sunday. And so it's just terrific things going on, and I see we're going to put a new person on the library commission. Fabulous. Part of why we're so proud of this community. But being from Ranch Las Palmas, in a way, I represent all of our homeowners. There's about 2,500 voters in that community, and I'm here today to inform you, really to, and to elicit your help and your support. The Omni Hotel is failing our community. We feel as homeowners and as members that the values that we have are being degraded and the horrible public reviews become ever more widely known, and they're out on all of the public information. The hotel boasts that it's a world-class resort, and yet one needs only to pass across the Bob Hope Bridge and see the vast wasteland that was once a golf course. As a resident of our community and member of the club, I am concerned about the loss of revenue that we realize as a community, knowing how much we rely on hotel taxes to fund our town. As an example, we're told that Thanksgiving, which should be a full house, was only at 60%. Many club members have left to join other clubs and other communities. After trying to work cooperatively with the current management, which was possible before this management team came in place, we are now forced to submit a formal list of grievances based entirely upon a court-ordered mandate. We need to get their attention at their corporate headquarters in Dallas, well above the local incompetent leadership. We would covet your help in doing so. I'm also happy to provide you with a list of some of the public reviews that are out there, but we sure would like to have your help in correcting this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty Odison?
Good afternoon. My name's Patty Odison. I'm a retired teacher from Lake Arrowhead, California. My husband and I retired here 15 years ago, and we live at Rancho Las Palmas Country Club. I'm here today along with fellow residents because we have become increasingly concerned about the steadfast deterioration of our country club golf course, tennis courts, clubhouse facilities, and clubhouse services. These are required to be maintained by the Omni Resort. Our home values, but more importantly, our quality of life at every level is affected by this. The view from our windows, the cart paths that we drive on, grass and dirt in our gutters, shabby clubhouse, poorly-run events, interactions with the staff are all affected. Four years ago, I was proud to invite friends and family to golf and to dine at the club. No longer. We are appealing to you after three years of repeated requests to Omni that have not been resolved. There are 874 condos at RLP. We're a semi-private country club and depend on the resort owner to maintain and manage the facilities and services. Since the '70s, this has been a good relationship, very cooperative. There's a settlement agreement in place to ensure this. We have a compliance committee, and they work to document requests and concerns. Homeowners pay proprietary dues to Omni directly to ensure that the property and course are maintained, so they have a good base of funding from every single homeowner, well in excess of $1 million a year. With this amount of money, our facility should be maintained. Omni is a multimillion-billion-dollar company, and we believe they are not doing their part in maintaining the property to the standards of a Rancho Mirage resort. We know that recently the city of Rancho Mirage was instrumental in helping to resolve a similar problem that Rancho Mirage Country Club had with their new owners of their course and their clubhouse, and we are hoping that you'll be able to help us. We just want the well-maintained, well-staffed, welcoming country club that was here four years ago back again. This is just happening in this last three years. So we want to be proud enough to invite our friends and family back to Rancho Las Palmas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Gelman?
I'd like to give you some photos. You can pass around. Thank you. You might need to lower this. Hello. My name is Susan Gelman, and I have lived in Rancho Mirage for 15 years at Rancho Las Palmas Country Club. As you know, Omni Hotel runs through our property. I joined the landscape committee 12 years ago. Our job is to ensure that our landscape is sustainable for the future. Our projects have been many. We have upgraded our irrigation, removed dead trees, and planted new ones, updated our front gate and our back gate. Until three years ago, when Omni hired new management of hotel and golf course, Omni always worked with us to clean up after a storm of debris, mud, and the wash that runs across our street, El Toro. Now, when we are left with cleanup of the El Toro Street, they refuse to help us, nor have they cleaned out the wash from multiple storms, and you know it's going to rain again. I've given you some pictures of what our street and the wash look like today. Standing water and proper maintenance, which has caused us to have a West Nile violation from the water district, and Omni has been cited by vector control. Omni is not in compliance on multiple levels, and we need your help so we can bring our property back to the beauty it once was. We at Rancho Las Palmas are good neighbors, and we need Omni to step up and be good neighbors too. Thank you for this time.
Thank you.
Christopher Nos?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Christopher Nos. I go by Chris. My wife and I, my wife Jean and I, have lived at Rancho Las Palmas for 10 years now. We love that place, and it's not just for the beautiful mountain views, but what used to be the delightful amenities now owned by the Omni Hotel, which are the clubhouse, the tennis courts, and the 27 holes of golf. To us, this place seemed to capture the essence of life at Rancho Mirage. No more. Omni has owned this property for 10 years now, and I cannot remember a single example of improvement they have made on the facilities. The clubhouse needs a remodel, the 45-year-old golf course is in disrepair, and the parking lot has never been repaved. The repairs they do make are patchwork and poorly thought out. My fellow homeowners, Patty, Michael, and Susan, we're not an official delegation from the Rancho Las Palmas homeowners. We are here as concerned owners today. That said, you should know that we are not a group of radical malcontents either. Far from it. Patty and Michael are elected directors of the HOA. Susan is the chairperson of the HOA Landscape Committee, and I am currently treasurer of our HOA as well as a past president. As board members, we meet with the Omni leadership quarterly and have attempted to resolve the issues that have been brought up today. Sadly, these meetings meet Einstein's definition of insanity, which is to say, doing the same thing over and over again, bringing up issues and expecting different results. Local management has no budget approval authority, and corporate Omni in Dallas has shown no interest in any of these needed enhancements. So what are we asking of city council today? Simply whatever help you can give us. Do you have a relationship with Omni Corporate or Omni Local Leaders? Are there ordinances that they are violating? Finally, we invite you all to see for yourselves what we are talking about. Please, we would welcome you, all of you, to visit the facility, guided or not. I could leave with your clerk, the name of our general manager, who can assist in that effort, okay? So finally, Rancho Las Palmas Country Club has long been a desirable place to live. I'm sure you all will agree the last thing we want is what happened at Rancho Mirage Country Club a few years ago. We are not there yet, but just stand on the Bob Hope Bridge looking to the east, and you can see our worst fears. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Wally Melendez?
Good afternoon, city council, administration, and we, the people. their services that they deserve, that they pay for. Last meeting, a very interesting term was passed around: affordable housing. Now, with all due respect to the people that own multimillion-dollar homes out here, that's fine, that got their gated communities, and so that's fine. So this interesting term, affordable housing, like I said, like I said last meeting, it covers a lot of ground. But it's affordable housing. It's a dirt word. It's a word, dirt term. There is no such thing as affordable housing. What most people, what I understand, what I hear, most people say affordable housing is housing for people with low income. All right, that's fine. However, we're not, we're over Reagan trickle-down economics. This is a new age. Nowadays, what we should have, when there's multimillion-dollar corporations build these little apartments on top of each other, these little apartments, one-bedroom apartments, what we need now is rent to own so that those people that are poor can rise up. The other term that was used when, that the construction workers use, I used to be a construction worker, is option to buy. So you don't go the rest of the few years you got to go and throw all your money down the drain. Give it to the multimillion-dollar corporations. Another thing I want to say is I'm against this Big Brother surveillance in this town. All over the library, there's video cameras. They're putting them on the streets. I don't know who is responsible for this. I don't like it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That was the last speaker card. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? That was the last speaker.
That concludes the non-agenda public comments. We will now go to council board member comments. I'll start with our council member Malato.
I have no comments this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Good afternoon, everyone. I hope your new year is off to a good start. I would like you to circle two dates on your calendar. First, next Tuesday, January 23rd, is a fundraiser for the Children's Discovery Museum. The museum is reopening on March 25th, and the CEO Cindy Burrison gave the board a sneak peek about the remodeled building. So if you think you know what the Discovery Museum used to look like is going to look like now, you're in for a surprise because it's been totally reimagined. It's beautiful, it's colorful, and it's going to attract children of all ages and their families. And Cindy and her team are working tirelessly to make sure that this is a great asset to our city, as I'm sure it will be. And like all museums and all 501(c)(3)'s, they need community support to financially support their efforts. So if you're interested in going to the fundraiser, you can buy tickets at Eventbrite.com and click on Adventure Awaits: Fundraiser for Children's Discovery Museum. That's next Tuesday. The second date is Thursday, February 8th, 2:00 p.m. The City Cultural Commission is sponsoring a presentation by our wonderful Melissa Ritchie, who you just heard speak. If you're interested in architecture and design, as I am, and if you're interested in local history, as we all are, you don't want to miss this talk. Ms. Ritchie is an entertaining speaker. I've heard her before, and she will tell us how Rancho Mirage grew from a small village into the city that we know and love today. The admission to this event is free. It's at the library on February 8th, 2:00 p.m., and all events by the City Cultural Commission are free of charge. So I hope I'll see you at these events, and I look forward to it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Good comments. Councilmember Marker?
No, I have no comments at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll mention briefly a couple of things. I think that there was an announcement a week ago about a new tenant that will be moving into the river called REI, which is an entity that specializes in outdoor camping, clothing, biking, and so forth. Major, major tenant that will be occupying space formerly occupied by Forever 21 many years ago by Border Books. It's a great asset to the river, and I think it continues what we all hope is a renaissance of the river, along with Dave and Buster's. It's a different demographic. It's an entity that is owned by its members in the area of its influence. It's estimated that there are approximately 17,000 members already. So that, along with the occupying of the space by Dave and Buster's, is a real boon to the center, and I think is going to be, as I say, a great asset to the area. So we're very excited, and I want to congratulate the river on that. One other thing is that we had a groundbreaking over the weekend at Eisenhower Health, and once again, we are most proud of Eisenhower Health, certainly the largest employer in our city. And this is going to be a four-story, major cardiac center, a new building that was underwritten primarily by the Washingtons, Phyllis and Dennis Washington, major philanthropists in our valley, and the groundbreaking was, you know, quite spectacular. So we're very excited about that. That concludes my comments regarding council board comments, and I will go to the city manager with any comments he might have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Thank you to the residents from Rancho Las Palmas that showed up today to speak. Mina Dukic, our Development Services Director, gave you her business card, so please give the relevant information to Mina and to the council staff. We'll see, from a city perspective, whether city codes or violations are occurring and start to address those, and also work with the Omni to see if there's a solution that they can come up with. That's it for today.
All right. Well, while you've got the microphone, Mr. City Manager, if you'd go directly into the consent calendar.
Thank you. So the council has eight items on the consent calendar. Staff is requesting that we pull and table item number four, so that item will not be considered today. So that leaves you with seven items remaining on your consent calendar. Item number one is to approve the December 21st, 2023, regular meeting minutes. Item number two is to approve the appointment of General Guido Portante to the Rancho Mirage Community Cultural Commission. Item number three is to approve the appointment of Mary Willis Yoshioka to the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory Foundation Board. Item number four has been pulled and tabled and is no longer being considered. Item number five is to adopt resolution number 2024, next in order, dissolving the Speaker Series Commission. Item number six is to receive and file the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023, and other related audit reports. Item number seven are contracts, and item number eight are demands. And before we go to council comments or questions, I'll ask the city clerk to conduct any public comment on the consent calendar.
Thank you. I've received one speaker card. Brad Anderson?
Hi again, Brad Anderson, City Ranch Mirage. I want to speak on item number five in as to, I guess, dissolving of the Speaker Series Commission. If you could possibly give a brief explanation of why you would do that, because the staff reports says nothing about it, and I just want to remind everybody that this has happened before with those license plate readers, and that was a sign ordinance-type issue, and that commission was dissolved too for some odd reason. And if you could explain that, that'd be great. Thank you.
That was the only speaker card. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on the consent calendar? That was the only speaker.
Thank you. Are there any council comments regarding the consent calendar? All right. I will. I will ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar, excepting item number four that has been pulled. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item number four.
I'll second that.
Please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
And the consent calendar has been approved. The next item is the consideration of adopting Resolution Number 2024, calling an election and levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities District Number 1. Evidently, that item you're saying has, just for clarification purposes, has already been approved. And is there anyone in the audience that would like to say anything about it? I'd like to congratulate those that were involved in the presentation. Now, originally Jacob was going to make comment. Is he?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Protem, I just wanted to thank our two new commissioners that volunteer on city commissioners, or city commissions. As we know here in the city, those commissions are vitally important to what we do here, and they're made up of resident volunteers that donate their time just to make Rancho Mirage the special place that it is. So if either one of the appointees would like to say anything, you're welcome to. You don't have to.
Mary, Eddie.
All right. Well, we can go ahead and move on to item number nine, Mr. Mayor Protem.
All right. I'm sorry. I didn't understand that you wanted to congratulate. Those people indeed were, were most pleased with both Guido Portante and Mary Willis, who was here today. Thank you for being here and, and your service. With that, I will return to item number nine, which is the Resolution Number 2024. And Kofi is now going to handle that. Kofi, if you would, please.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good afternoon, council. So this item is to hold a public hearing for annexation 191 into Community Facilities District Number 1. This is the second and last step in the city's standard annexation process into Community Facilities Number 1. The first step was considered and approved by the council on December 7, 2023, with the adoption of Resolution Number 2023-57. The territory proposed for annexation is located on the south side of Cleanse Lane, between Rancho Mananan Lane and the northernmost extension of Rancho Las Palmas Country Club. Its one parcel totaling approximately 3.25 acres. The project is slated to subdivide the parcel into two residential parcels and a drive, a private driveway. At the conclusion of today's public hearing, provided written protests have not been filed and in the absence of a majority protest, the council may consider adoption of the attached resolution, calling a special election, declaring the results of the special election, determining validity of prior proceedings, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing recording of an amendment to the notice of special tax lien. Staff recommends approval of the resolution, and that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kofi. Kofi is our Director of Administrative Services. I will ask the city clerk, is there any public testimony on this item?
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to provide public testimony on this public hearing item? No speakers.
Is there any council comments? There is none.
Mayor Protem, may I interrupt just one second? I do have the announcement of the election results, if I can do that, really.
Yes, I was just going to ask you.
Okay, thank you. So the ballot for the four eligible votes was received on January 10th, 2024, and was in favor. Therefore, votes cast in favor equal 100% of total votes cast.
Okay, thank you very much. Once again, unless there are additional comments, I will ask for a motion on the item.
I'd be happy to, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'd like to make a motion that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2024, Next in Order, calling an election on levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities District Number 1, parentheses, annexation number 191, parentheses, declaring the election results, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing the recordation of the amendment of the notice of special tax lien, parentheses, in connection with tentative parcel map number TPM 38152-Bushnag, end of parentheses.
I'll second. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. The next item will be the consideration of a resolution designating the resident, residential home located at 4941 Thunderbird Road, a historic resource. Ben Torres, our planning manager, will handle this item. Ben, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Protem, and members of the city council. Can we have the presentation pulled up? Thank you. So the property owners, Thomas Watson and Andrew Kleiman, submitted a historic designation request for their home located at 4941 Thunderbird Road. The subject, 2,233 square foot residence with a detached 500-square-foot guest house is situated on a 1.25-acre parcel along the north side of Thunderbird Road, as shown here in red. The mid-century modern residence with Japanese influence was built in 1960 and was designed by architects Thornton Ladd and John Kelsey. This home is not included in the city's Historic Resources Survey, but a detailed historic analysis was provided. Thornton Ladd opened his firm, Thornton Ladd and Associates, in 1954, prior to partnering with John Kelsey in October of 1959. Thornton Ladd worked on preliminary plans for the subject residence before this merger, and the final plans were under the combined firm of Thornton Ladd and John Kelsey. In addition, Thornton Ladd was listed in a book, Architecture USA, which included a list of 35 influential U.S. architects at the time. These are some photographs showing a comparison from 1961, which show no changes to the guest house and lotus-shaped pool. The only change noted is in the dining terrace enclosure on the top image, but the home still maintains its historic integrity. These are views from the main house's south elevation, showing the deep roof overhangs, Japanese-style shade screens, and the hip cedar-shaped roof with flared eaves, which are Japanese-influenced. And then the home's exterior primarily consists of large expanses of glass, which is clearly shown on the north and east elevations. The picture on the top right shows the home's basement entrance, which is only accessible from the exterior and contains areas for laundry and mechanical equipment. The front door handle of the home, shown in the image on the bottom right, incorporates a lotus shape, which is a reference also to its Japanese influence in addition to the pool. The detached guest house and carport contain the same mid-century modern design elements with a Japanese influence and the same exterior materials as the main house. The homeowners are seeking historic designation based on the following criterias. One, that the subject's structure or site is representative of a particular architectural style or reflects special elements of a historical period-type style or way of life importance to the city, which is due to the home's mid-century modern design with Japanese influence. And two, that the subject's structure or site represents the work of a master builder, engineer, designer, artist, or architect whose individual genius influenced an era, which is due to the home's architect Thornton Ladd. In addition, the Historic Preservation Commission reviewed this request on November 8th, 2023, and a property tour took place on December 6th. The commission unanimously agreed that the residents met, though, a criteria for designation. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2024, Next in Order, designating the residential home located at 4941 Thunderbird Road, Rancho Mirage, California, Assessor's Parcel Number 690-171-003, a historic resource pursuant to Rancho Mirage Municipal Code Chapter 15.27. That concludes staff's presentation, and staff, the property owner, and the property owner's representative are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Are there any public comments that have been requested?
I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to provide public testimony on this item? No speakers.
Thank you. Is there any council comments regarding the item? All right. I will call for a motion regarding Resolution approving this item.
I'd be happy to make a motion, Mr. Mayor Protem, that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2024, Next in Order, designating the residence located at 40941 Thunderbird Road, Rancho Mirage, California, Assessor Parcel Number 690-171-003, a historic resource pursuant to the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code Chapter 1527.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
Very good. The next item is on the action calendar. It's consideration of a resolution approving a funding contribution to the Palm Springs Air Museum. And that will be discussed by our city manager, Isaiah Hagerman.
Mayor Protem and city manager, if I may, before, may, councilmember Barker will be recusing herself due to a potential conflict of interest as her company does business with the Palm Springs Air Museum. As such, she'll be recusing herself, and we'll step away from the dais while the council considers the matter.
All right.
We may continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, and the remaining council members. The item before you today that you are considering is a resolution which would provide a funding contribution to the Palm Springs Air Museum and their plans for expansion. So the museum was established in 1996, and since then has established itself as one of our cherished regional facilities. And the component that we're talking about today and really that we're supporting with this resolution is an expansion of their educational programming. So that's where I'm going to focus most of my comments, and then when I'm done, Fred Bell is here, and he's going to come up and say a few words as well. So this regional facility attracts students from all the valley school districts, independent schools, charter schools. About 50% of the attendees come from households below the regional median income. The museum prioritizes education by offering to our schooled-age children here in the valley and the expanded area, free admission, free transportation, free lunch, and study guides, videos for attending students. Furthermore, entrance to the museum for children age 12 and under are free, and that aligns with the museum's mission. This year, just to give you kind of the scope of the attendance from the children here in the valley and surrounding areas, is they're expecting about 5,000 students to go through the museum this year. So part of this expansion project is when you visit the museum, as this has grown. So their facility needs to grow as well. And so this financial contribution would be a small part in helping them accomplish that so that they can house more students and really raise up the next generation that will one day be sitting in the seats that we are in now. So with that, if the council decides to adopt this resolution, it is a $150,000 contribution for this purpose, and that would be split between two fiscal years, and that would be $75,000 per fiscal year. And of course, that would be subject to a budget surplus. So if, in a year, for whatever reason, we were not having a budget surplus, that would be delayed until we did have a budget surplus. With that, I'd like to invite up Fred Bell. Fred, thanks for being here today.
Hi. First of all, my name is Fred Bell. I'm the vice chairman of the Palm Springs Air Museum, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak to you. Secondly, I haven't been in this chamber for some time, and it is absolutely fabulous. I'm, I was here at BIA many years ago, and I was with the Bureau, or the Building Industry Association, not the Bureau of Indian Affairs. And I used to come in and drive Isaiah nuts at that time because we were talking about building fees. Today, I get to talk to you about something that's more important, and that is creating the foundation, as we move forward, for kids in the valley. And the Air Museum is deeply committed to technical and scientific education and advancement. We do not replace public schools or private schools, but our opportunity is to enhance. So if a child is interested in a technical degree, and it doesn't have to necessarily be engineering, as an example. It could be biology, because biology works into that, and a lot of the other scientific disciplines. We also provide a scholarship program for the young science professionals in the valley, and we do two of those a year. Those are $10,000 scholarships, which are four-year scholarships. And we have kids at UCLA, we have kids in Embry-Riddle, we're getting ready to have some kids at Cal Poly. So there are a number of things that we do. We have grown. As the city manager said, our programs have 5,000 kids in them right now, and we are bursting at the seams to the point where all of our programs through June of this year are completely full, and we can't handle any more kids. That is our challenge, and the expansion will increase our capacity by about 2/3 and allow us to do that. And it's not just science, but it's also thinking outside the box. And if I can approach the dais there, I'm going to leave you two things. These I leave behind. I need the box back, but... These are our education program books that we provide free of charge. And that box was made from a single sheet of aluminum in our restoration facility by the kids. Now, why is that important? That's important because they have to figure out how to cut it. They have to, you know, all the measurements that go involved in that, they have to figure out how to fold it. They have to buck the rivets. And so that is critical because when you get into aerospace or a technical degree, and as some of you know, you have to be able to apply those technologies to what you're doing. And so that is not a donation box, but it is an example of a, really, such a simple thing, but it's very cool that they actually made that from scratch. So I am very grateful for you allowing me to speak to you today. I hope you will support this request. The gala, again, this year, which supports our programs, is sold out for the fifth year in a row. I'm happy to report, and we will see you there. We are partnering with Lockheed this year and the Skunk Works. And I will say publicly, we've talked about it on social media, but the SR-72, which is the Darkstar, will greet you on the ramp when you arrive, and then on our, on the airport side. And that is completely done by Lockheed Corporation, who's continuing to support us. Of course, if you don't know what Darkstar is, Tom Cruise got blown up in it, is theoretically in Top Gun Maverick. But obviously, he didn't because the airframe will be on our ramp. And with that, I'm open to questions, if you do have any council questions.
I'll merely say, Fred, that the Air Museum is one of the great assets of the valley. It is so well-received. It is, again, it's an amenity for so many people, whether it be adults or whether it be kids going to school. So we're just very pleased to have the opportunity to contribute in some way. And I would look forward to casting a vote. forward to casting a vote in favor of your request. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. Any other comments?
If I may, Fred, thank you again for the wonderful tour of the Air Museum. It's a treat every time I have the opportunity to tour the facility, and on that day, there were several areas of the museum that I had the, I had the pleasure of watching children, young children, and some teenagers, just completely fascinated with what they were seeing, experiencing, and interacting with. And it reminded me of my son's visit to the Air Museum almost 30 years ago. You remember, Zach? And from that, from that experience and having conversations with my father about World War II, it created an unbreakable bond about the subject matter and the Greatest Generation. And when I see children there learning above and beyond what the school districts are teaching, just in additional layers, it gives me comfort to know that they will understand, hopefully one day, the greatest sacrifice that was made by hundreds of thousands of people during that time, and will continue the knowledge and traditions that the museum offers. So, thank you for what you do and the team does over at the Palm Springs Air Museum.
Thank you very much.
Those are good comments. Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Yes. I want to thank you for taking the time to give me that tour. I hadn't been to the museum for a while, and while seeing those magnificent machines up close is always exciting, and it's historic, and it's touching some of the stories that you tell that go with it, that was really great. I was, however, unfamiliar with the extent of your educational programs, and I'm just so impressed because for children or kids of any age who are interested in perhaps a career in aviation, or robotics, or mechanical engineering, and getting things that they otherwise might not get at their schools, I think you provide a really wonderful thing, and so I'm happy to support this.
Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, are there any other public comments requested?
I did not receive any speaker cards. Is, okay, we have one speaker. Please come up and state your name.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Yes, there, come on up, Bill, if you'd give your name.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, while, city council, staff. My name is Bill Reason. I live in La Toraza here in Rancho Mirage. You may, some of you may remember me as your representative on the Palm Springs Airport Commission. I was a commissioner for, on there, representing you for about six years, I believe. Anyway, I'm currently a very active member of the Palm Springs Air Museum. Been, I've been active there for probably, I don't know, 15 years or more, and I know Fred very well. And first of all, I want to agree with everything Fred said and everything that's in your staff report. You may remember seeing an article in the paper the other day about, in fact, I think it was a front-page article, about the expansion projects at the Air Museum. Quite a few things going on other than the education, which is very, very important. But over the years I've been active, I've seen a lot of improvements. More space, new hangars, more aircraft on display, more exhibits around the museum, which change, excuse me, which change periodically. Very, very, very great museum. In fact, I understand it's been voted the number-one air museum in California. Fred can probably comment. Anyway, some of the projects going on, other than the education, redoing the front entrance, a lot of projects, I think they're in your staff report, but in the 27 years or so that the museum has been in existence, it's ready for a major facelift. And this, this program with the several projects involved will, will do just that. And I support the proposed expansion projects entirely, and I encourage you to support them also by voting to adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? That was the only speaker.
All right. That being said, may I have a motion regarding this proposal?
I'd be happy to make the motion that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2024, next in order, approving a funding contribution to the Palm Springs Air Museum expansion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 3-0 with Councilmember Marker recused.
All right. We'll wait a minute while Councilmember Marker returns.
Don't forget your box, Fred.
That, that concludes the action calendar, and we are going to be going to closed session in a moment. I'll ask our attorney, Colin Cook-Patrick, to summarize the items that will be covered in the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We'll be convening into closed session pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9, Subpart D1, under the Conference with Legal Counsel Due to Existing Litigation. Case name is Vacation Rental Owners and Neighbors of Rancho Mirage et al., v. City of Rancho Mirage et al., Case Number CVRI 2100368.
Very good. Thank you. We will now recess to closed session. The city council is now back in session. The city attorney will report any, any comments regarding the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. No reportable action today.
Thank you. The meeting has now concluded. Thank you.